Good morning, my name is Chee Sin Hsieh, Chairperson of the Authority. I would like to call to order the June 5th, 2024 public hearing of the Hawaii Community Development Authority. The time is now nine AM.
Thank you Chair, the Hawaii Community Development Authority is holding today's public hearing both virtually on Zoom and in person. The Zoom link details were included in the public hearing notice. Therefore, members of public, welcome to join us on Zoom or at the physical meeting site at the American Brewery Building, 547 Queen Street, second floor boardroom, Honolulu, Hawaii, 96813. The ACDA communications staff is hosting the Zoom portion of this hearing. Once the public hearing begins, everyone will be muted for clearer audio. Board members, if you have any comments or questions, please unmute yourselves and speak. It is important that all individuals clearly state their name each time prior to speaking. If you are providing verbal public testimony, your name will be called accordingly. If you are attending in person when your name is called, please come to the front of the room. And if you are attending virtually, please turn your video on only while providing your testimony. In either case, please clearly state your name and affiliation and proceed with your testimony. Oral testimony may be limited to three minutes at the discretion of the presiding officer. We accept all non-matters directly related to the public hearing subject. If the authority's connection for the remote meeting is lost, the hearing will be recessed until the connection is restored. If the connection cannot be restored within thirty minutes, the hearing will be reconvened Thursday, June 6th, 2024 at nine AM at the same physical location and virtual Zoom link as today's hearing. Thank you.
Let the record reflect, the following Kalailoa members are present. Vice Chair Higa?
Present.
Katerya Paul?
Present.
Member Miranda Johnson?
Present.
Member Nassar?
Present.
Member Streits?
Present.
And excused is Member Evans. Is Member Ray here? Number Ray's excused. Individuals from the public who have requested to provide verbal public testimony on a specific agenda item are on standby and will be permitted to provide testimony respectively. Would counsel for the applicant make their appearance at this time?
Hi, good morning Chair Hsieh, members of the Authority, Executive Director Nakamoto, members of the staff, Brian Ken doing here today on behalf of Hunt Communities Hawaii LLC.
Good morning, Brian.
Good morning. Legal basis of purpose, today's hearing is being convened under the provisions of Chapter fifteen dash two one five Kalailoa Community Development District Rules and fifteen dash two one nine Rules of Practice and Procedure, Hawaii Administrative Rules and Section 206E 5.6 Hawaii Revised Statute. Consider the following matter. The applicant is Hunt Communities Hawaii LLC. The development permit application number is KAL twenty-three dash zero zero five. The project is Hunt Parcel 10 Improvements. The tax map key is nine dash one dash zero one three zero nine seven. Address ninety-one dash ten forty-nine Enterprise Avenue, couple in Hawaii, nine six seven zero seven. The project description. The applicant is proposing renovations to the interior and exterior of the existing Quonset Hut warehouse building on Parcel 10. The interior renovation shall include upgrades and repairs to the aging structural, mechanical, and electrical systems, including improvements to egress corners, fire sprinkler alterions. Exterior work will include repainting, warehouse door replacements, lighting repairs, replacements. Site work will include essential upgrades to the aging electrical infrastructure for connection to equalize the security improvements to secure the perimeter of Parcel 10. Improvements are to include installation of new fencing to augment the site's existing fencing. In conjunction with this development permit, the applicant is also requesting the following variants from the Kalailoa Community Development District Rules. Variance number one, increasing the permitted height of the proposed fences along Randolph Street and Enterprise Avenue from three feet to eight feet. Variance number two, increase the permitted height of the VIP towing site fence from three feet to six feet. And variance number three, authorizing the use of chain link security fencing material for all of the fences. The material will include a black color embedded mesh fabric to cover the chain link fence. The applicant will be making a presentation at a separate public hearing for the three modifications that will be held tomorrow, Thursday, June 6th, 2024 at nine AM. Legal notice, public hearing notice was published in the Honolulu Star and Herald, Maui News, the Guarded Out Hawaii Tribute Herald, and West Hawaii Today on Friday, May 3rd, 2024.
Chair. Procedures for this morning's hearing, let me briefly explain our procedures for today's public hearing. First, ACDA staff will present its report summarizing the applicant's waiver request. Following that presentation, we will receive the presentation of the applicant and then testimony from the public. Only members of the ACDA Authority and the Executive Director will be permitted to ask questions of the staff, applicant, intervenor, or individuals providing testimony. I'll be acting as the presiding officer for this hearing. Are there any questions to these procedures? Not in accordance with H A R fifteen dash two one nine dash four nine, interested persons were provided an opportunity to intervene, to participate as party in this hearing by submitting a written request to ACDA by four thirty PM on Thursday, May twenty-third, 2024. For the record, no motions to intervene received by ACDA for the Parcel 10 improvements application. Well, nor received by ACDA for the Parcel 10 application. We will now begin our proceedings. Starting with our staff report, ACDA's planning, Director of Planning and Development Ryan Tam will now present the staff's report, right?
Hello, Chair Hsieh and board members, good morning. Again, the staff report is in your packet and was uploaded for public review. I will summarize a few key points of the staff report, however. I also want to acknowledge the hard work, long work of Charlene Okulong, Staff Planner, and the rest of the planning team, Sari, Jen, and Nancy, and Renee. All working together to support Charlene, so a lot of our team effort here and what's impressive with ACDA team. Again, the application was deemed complete on May 3rd, 2024 and will be automatically approved on September 2nd, 2024 if no action is taken before then. As, again, as you noted, public hearing notices were mailed out and we did not get any requests for intervention. The State Historic Preservation Division accepted the archaeological monitoring plan on April 22nd, 2024. We did get comments, or lack of comments, or no comments from three city county agencies, Fire Department, Police Department, Board of Water Supply, also the State Department of Education, the L and R, Department of Land and Natural Resources, Fish and Wildlife, Hawaii Department of Transportation, also comments or lack thereof from the Hawaiian Electric Company and Hawaii Gas. With regards to the project itself, again, the, as noted, the primary consists of renovations to buildings, again, removing about two thousand two hundred thirty square feet of existing floor area and an underground electrical line. With regards to land use and zoning, this is within the T3 transect zone, which is essentially mixed use with commercial and light industrial, so this project is consistent. The, with regards to open space, it is non-conforming, but the site currently has nine thousand four hundred square feet of open space, which is about five point six five percent of the lot. Again, not twenty percent required, but it is non-conforming. Modifications will be discussed tomorrow at the variance hearing. Again, this project is consistent, we believe it's consistent with the master plan, is creating new economic opportunities, consistent with the vision. We do not see any adverse effects with the surrounding of land uses and thus it is consistent with the rules. There were five letters in support of the project. Subject to your questions, that summarizes the staff report.
Members, do you have any questions on the staff report? If not, then we will proceed with the receipts of exhibitions. Will counsel for the applicant please describe your exhibits that you wish to have admitted to record?
Thank you Chair Hsieh, time moves into evidence since exhibits in its exhibit list filed on May 28th, 2024, and that would be the exhibit smart as exhibits one through twenty.
Thank you. Members, do you have any objections to the exhibits being offered by the applicant? Does the Executive Director have any objections to the exhibits being offered by the applicant?
None Chair.
Hearing no objections, the applicant's exhibits one to twenty are admitted to the record. Will you be establishing any of your witnesses as experts in the subject area? And if so, please make your presentation at this time.
Thank you Chair Hsieh, Hunt requests to qualify certain expert witnesses in their respective fields of expertise as stated in Hunt's witness list filed on May 28th, 2024. Those would be Dean Akula Ely in Architecture, Christopher Monahan PhD in Archaeology, and Holly Tice in Architecture and Historic Preservation. And unless the board has any questions, we request these witnesses be so qualified as they're as experts in their respective fields for both the presentation hearing as well as the appearance here as offered.
Members, do you have any objections to the qualification of expert witnesses offered by the applicant? Does the Executive Director have any objections to the expert witnesses offered by the applicant?
None Chair.
Hearing no objections, the list of experts offered by the applicant is hereby accepted and qualified in their various subject matters and areas with the receipt of all exhibits and the list of experts being entered into record, let us proceed with our hearing. You may now call your first witness.
Thank you Chair Hsieh, Hunt's first witness is Kathleen Iriarting of Hunt Development.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to affirm or affirm that the testimony you will be providing is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair Hsieh, for purposes of the record, a number of our witnesses will be referring to a slide presentation which we're also sharing on the screen, and that is marked as exhibit twenty for your convenience. Ms. Iriarting, can you please recite your name and also call us your place of employment and position, please?
My name is Kathleen Iriarting, and I'm an Assistant Development Manager at Hunt Communities Hawaii.
And can you briefly summarize Hunt's Parcel 10 project development permit application that is currently before the ACDA official?
The Parcel 10 project is bounded by Monterey Street, Enterprise, and Randolph Street. Development permit you have in front of you will allow us to update existing property to meet building codes for health and safety requirements and allow for today's commercial and industrial users to conduct business from the property. This will be accomplished by the improvements described in the application.
And can you please share with us a summary of the improvements described in the application?
So the plan improvements are primarily to modernize the building and bring it up to code. The application describes various interior improvements, including upgrading the electrical panels, meters, light fixtures, HVAC. They also have various life and fire safety related improvements, including the fire riser, fire sprinklers, and new fire exit egress. Other plans include removing non-structural walls to allow for clear span space. We having the common area restrooms, adding a common area corridor, and new doors for access. The other, we also have various exterior improvements, and that includes installing a security chain link fence, and that's along a portion of Enterprise and Randolph Street. Also have plans to repave the parking lot, replacing exterior light fixtures, adding and enlarging roll-up doors. And last but not least, installation of the underground power line connecting to Hiko Power to replace the antiquated Navy electrical infrastructure. The application, the application also seeks for the variance for the security fencing, which will be discussed tomorrow at tomorrow's variance hearing.
Thank you, and stepping back a little bit, can you briefly summarize Hunt's history in Kalailoa?
So in two thousand eight, Hunt acquired approximately five hundred forty acres of land in Kalailoa from the Navy. In twenty seventeen, more than half of that was transferred in fee. The balance is still under a Navy master ground lease. Parcel 10 is one of the parcels that was transferred in fee. And since two thousand eight, Hunt and its affiliates have invested over two hundred million dollars into redeveloping and revitalizing Kalailoa. We spend annually about ten million dollars in operation expenses to operate and maintain our portfolio. As a result, Hunt has repurposed over four hun- four million square feet of commercial space and attracted over seventy businesses to the area to date. These businesses provide essential services that includes the most, the newly opened VA Akaoka Clinic, Kamaiina Kids Preschool, Uluwa A Learning Center, and Tripler Army's Medical Clinic, which is located in the Kalailoa Professional Center. Hunt also has added hundreds of new jobs with this leasing program, and this project will continue that momentum.
And focusing more on Parcel 10 now, can you please show us the history of Parcel 10 itself?
So Parcel 10 has two structures, the first half is a Quonset hut that was originally originally built in nineteen forty-three. The second portion is a retail CMU building that was constructed in nineteen sixty-eight. These two structures served as a commissary for the farm, former Barber's Point Naval Air Station. When we acquired the property in two thousand eight from the Navy, we leased the building, both structures were leased to Tomora's Grocery Store, and the land behind it was leased to a light industrial user. Tomora's and the light industrial tenant vacated the property during COVID. In twenty twenty-one, Swinerton, a commercial construction company, moved in and occupies a portion of the Quonset hut, which is about fifteen thousand square feet, and that represents, it's close to fifty percent of the building. So the balance of the building and the light industrial lot remains vacant till today. The approval of this development permit will allow Hunt to improve the site and bring it back to its productive use, allowing multiple light industrial users to accompany the property alongside Swinerton. Improvements will also bring the building to code to reflect today's light industrial and commercial users' needs.
And how are the improvements for Parcel 10 aligned with Hunt's plan, overall plan for Kalailoa?
So Hunt has a proven track record for developing and managing quality housing for local and military families, including numerous affordable workforce housing communities throughout the state. Parcel 10 plays an integral part of Hunt's ongoing efforts to maximize commercial and workforce living opportunities in Kalailoa. Upon completion of their improvements, Parcel 10 will serve as multiple commercial and industrial users, will create local jobs and business opportunities to support Hawaii's economy. Hunt is committed to revitalizing Kalailoa's holdings into a thriving, vibrant community where local residents will be able to live, work, and play.
And can you please summarize how the improvements on Parcel 10 are compliant where and advance the goals, policies, and objectives of the current ACDA Kalailoa hospital?
So the commercial and industrial activities, they are consistent with the master plan goals and policies, balancing development within the district between residential, commercial, and public facilities uses.
And can you please share with us a brief summary of Hunt's efforts to provide notice of this hearing and obtain community input on the improvements from Parcel 10?
So we made a presentation regarding the project to the Makakilo and Kapalei Neighborhood Board, number thirty-four, and this was done on April twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. The board unanimously voted to provide a letter of support for the project, and no concerns were raised by the community at large.
Let me refer you to a letter dated May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four from the Department of Land and Natural Resources, Forestry and Wildlife Division regarding the project. It was a comment letter. Are you familiar with that letter?
Yes, we did receive that letter.
And what is Hunt's response to that letter?
So Hunt appreciates the division's comments and recommendations regarding measures to protect wildlife and mitigate against invasive species. With respect to the Hawaiian hori bat, Hunt will take note of the recommendation on site clearing and the notes, and note that we will use, we will not be using barbed wire fencing for this project. We are aware of the potential effects of artificial lighting on seabirds. Currently, we do not have any plans of any construction work on the property at night, and we will be using shielded outdoor lighting for all the outdoor fixtures. We also appreciate the recommendations on protecting the poe o owls, and we will take the appropriate measures to minimize the impact on the poe o's habitat. We plan to follow the division's recommendation on using native plants in our landscaping, and we will also work on minimizing the soil and plant movements to protect against coconut rhino beetles infestation as required by Department of Agriculture's emergency roles. And finally, Hunt is aware of the wildlife and protection measures and will follow best manage management construction practices during construction.
Alright. Thank you very much, Ms. Iriarting. Chair Hsieh Hunt has no further questions from Ms. Iriarting at this time, and she is available for any questions.
Members, do you have any questions for this witness?
Chair, I have one quick question, just in that letter that is from Doka, from Division of Forestry and Wildlife. I think they also mentioned coordinating or working with the Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization. Have you folks contacted or, I guess, I'm kind of wondering, have you folks formally responded to this letter to kind of explain how you're going to mediate all of the concerns listed?
I don't believe we have responded to the letter, but we will.
Okay, and then do you plan to also coordinate with the Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization? I guess they had some specific recommendations.
Yes, that wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, that's, that's my only question Chair, thank you.
Members, any other questions? I have a few questions. First of all, thank you very much for your presentation. When you're talking about the fence and the variance, you're saying that it's for health, security, and safety. So maybe explain to me, is this, is this considered a safety fence? A security fence, or, I mean, I know we're talking about no barbed wire, so on, so on, so, you know, is it permanent and what is the purpose?
So the safety part, I was referring to the interior improvements, that was more regarding removing asbestos. The chain link fence, we are focused on the security. Or it wraps around a portion of the front of the Quonset hut and maybe halfway to the back of the building, and it's really to protect Swinerton's equipment from that.
So you're looking at it as more of a permanent at this point type of offensive?
That would be correct. And again, just to, it's not for the entire premises, I mean, the site is four acres. This is just for a portion of it.
Just for that section.
And Chair Hsieh, just for the record, we will have additional evidence for the variance hearing tomorrow, specifically on the fencing and the justifications for the fencing in the hut.
Good, and in the location as well?
And the location as well, that's correct, thank you.
Any other questions? Any, any others? No questions, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You may proceed with calling your next witness.
Thank you Chair Hsieh, Hunt's next witness is Dean Akula Ely.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you will provide is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, can you please state your name, place of employment, and position, please?
My name is Dean Alcooli, I'm the owner and principal for DRA Architecture LLC.
Thank you very much, can you please describe your firm's experience?
So DRA Architecture was founded in two thousand and nine, and prior to that, I worked for Sowet and Associates for approximately twenty-two years, except a little stint when I moved back to Kauai and worked under a different architect. And over my thirty years of practicing architecture, I've been involved in numerous projects throughout the state, including industrial, commercial buildings, shopping centers, small shopping centers like strip malls, retail, residential projects, as well as interior tenant buildouts.
And what has your firm been retaining to do for this record?
The Hunt retained DRA Architecture, serves as an architect for renovations of the building as well as some site improvements to Parcel 10.
And, you know, from an architectural perspective, can you please summarize the project?
So the project involved various renovations, both interior and exterior with the site. It include multi-phase interior and exterior improvements such as to the Quonset hut that was there and the metal building with some concrete exterior on it. We also worked on some electrical upgrades, security improvements on the exterior of the building, as well as on the site. And, and some of it has been implemented by using the special assignment inspection, the SAI, that DPP allows. Also, the original Quonset hut was constructed before nineteen fifty, and it needed to be updated so that it can be used, be a viable use to future tenants, like a commercial or industrial tenants. While the historical nature of the building precludes major structural and siding modifications, the project design includes energy-efficient fixtures and features to materially reduce climate impacts. And in addition, Hunt's effort to modernize and renovate the building of this historic structure by reusing or repurposing a building instead of completely demolishing and bringing up another structure promotes the practice of sustainability.
Thank you, and in, in your professional opinion, does the proposed project comply with the provisions of HRS Section 206E dash five point six and Hawaii Administrative Rules fifteen dash two one five dash seventy-eight which sets forth a number of criteria that the board needs to consider in approving a project?
Yes, in my opinion, it does. The renovation, the proposed renovations and improvements for Parcel 10 preserves, it enhances the desirable neighborhood characteristics and is in compliance with the standard and guidelines set for it in the KCDD rules. It also aligns and is compatible with the existing and plans and character of the surrounding areas. Right now, Parcel 10 is not being utilized to its fullest potential use because of antiquated infrastructure such as multiple electrical outages, as well as providing, this project will provide needed code and building updates to security, as was mentioned, and also some safety features within the building that would be expected by prospective tenants. Um that would be expected by prospective tenants. The continued use as commercial or industrial have always been and will continue to remain consistent with the character of parcel tenth. And also in connection with the surrounding areas. As noted in Exhibit A of the application, the project materially complies with the provisions of the K C D D rules. The area is designated as Transit Zone T three general urban use. And so it is com- compatible and it is in in um the permitted use of a T three general urban use. By using commercial um or industrial entities as well as mixed-use projects for the property. And so given the material compo- compliance with the K C D D rules. And design elements, specimens, applications, and a project will protect. Preserve and enhance the desirable neighborhood characteristics and is compliant. With and will have no adverse effect on or existing surrounding land uses.
And when you're referring to the K C D D rules for the record, that would be the Kalalaua Community Development District rules, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
All right, thank you. Have you reviewed a letter uh dated May tenth, twenty twenty-four from the Honolulu Fire Department?
Yes, I have.
And uh can you please uh summarize um? Uh Hunt's response to the Honolulu Fire Department.
The Fire Department noted various requirements such as access rules. Um approved water supply for fire protection. It also requested a submission of civil drawings into uh D P P and routed through Fire Department. The project will comply with these requirements as noted in their letter. And also um H F D have clearly signed off on two of the permits that submitted to D P P for this project.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Akua Ely. Uh Chair Shi, uh Hunt has no further questions for this witness at this time. He's available for any questions from the board.
Thank you. Uh members or executive director Nakamoto, do you have any questions for this witness? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh you may now call your next witness. Thank you. Hunt's next witness is Christopher Monahan, who is appearing by Zoom.
Got it?
Yes. Mr. Monahan, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Mr. Hunt, Monahan, can you please uh restate your name, place of employment, and position for the record, please?
Yeah, Christopher Monahan. I'm an archaeologist and a principal investigator for Honua Consulting.
Thank you very much. Uh Mr. Monahan, you provided written direct testimony for this hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
And your resume is marked as an exhibit for this hearing as well, is that correct?
Yes.
Chair Shi, we rest on Mr. Monahan's written testimony, which has been received into evidence as Exhibit eleven. And we have no other questions for him at this time. He is available for any questions from the board.
Thank you. Members or executive director Nakamoto, do you have any questions for this witness?
Not for me, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Monahan.
Well.
Thank you, Mr. Monahan.
You may now call your next witness.
Thank you, Chair Shi. Hunt's next witness is Polly Tice.
Polly. You please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're providing is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Tice, can you please restate your name, place of employment, and and position for the record?
Polly Tice, um uh principal in Historic Research Section Directions for Mason.
Thank you. And you provided written testimony for this hearing, is that correct?
Correct.
And your resume is also marked as an exhibit for this hearing, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh Chair Shi, we rest on Ms. Tice's written testimony, uh which has been received into evidence as Exhibit eight. And she is available for any questions from the board.
Thank you. Members or executive director Nakamoto, do you have any questions for this witness?
Not here.
Members. Uh thank you, Ms. Tice.
Thank you.
You may now call your next witness.
Chair Shi, Hunt has no further witnesses uh at this time for this presentation hearing.
With that stated, we will now proceed to public testimony. Since the notice of the public hearing was published on Friday, May third, twenty twenty-four, and written testimony invited. As of today, H C D has received five written testimonies, five in favor, zero in opposition. We will now take verbal testimony. We'll hear the testimony from the public. Speakers will be called upon to testify in the order in which they have signed up. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes each. Since each authority member has or will be given a copy of any written testimony that you have made already been provided. Please refrain from reading your written testimony. Instead, summarize your comments in the time that you have available. When you are called, please clearly state your name and any organization that you will be representing. And the first sign person signed up is. Karen Polk.
Good morning, Chair, members of the authority, director and staff. My name is Karen Polk, and I'm here today on behalf of the Kafalei Chamber of Commerce as their executive director. Um I did, uh we did submit uh written testimony. And um I just have a few points to highlight on our testimony. Um you know, we commend uh um the applicant um for, as mentioned by their representative, they brought seventy businesses into the region. And that is definitely a first and foremost priority for us as a region, regional chamber. To find more economic opportunities and jobs in our area as we're the fastest growing region in the state. Um so uh you know, these um efforts to modernize and renovate the building will bring in more businesses, obviously, more jobs. And hopeful hopefulness for our keiki to have opportunities, more opportunities, so they don't move off island. Um secondly, um I just also want to highlight the inventory in our state or in on our island, excuse me. Um on Ovoahu, um you know, the there's a the college report that ended in uh twenty twenty-three, ended the year at point six four. Uh percent for industrial space. So we do have a need um for more space. And so we also um appreciate the opportunity to have a few more opportunities. Uh for for those pers- prospective tenants. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Um is there any other public testimony? Okay, since there's no further public testimony, I'll proceed with closing today's hearing. Now, the authority would like to close the record for the hearing unless the council for the applicant would like to request the record be kept open.
Thank you, Chair Shi. Uh Hunt does request the record be kept open for purposes of receiving evidence for the variance hearing tomorrow.
The authority will keep the record open to allow the applicant to submit additional material into record.
Thank you.
If there's no further comments or discussion, then on behalf of the H C D authority members and its staff, thank you for your attendance. As mentioned earlier, in conjunction with these this development permit application. The applicant is requesting modifications from the Kalalaua rules. And will be making a presentation on those modifications tomorrow, Thursday, June sixth, twenty twenty-four, at nine A M. Virtually on Zoom. And the physical meeting site will also be available. A decision-making hearing will be held on Wednesday, July third, twenty twenty-four, at nine A M. Virtually on Zoom, and the physical meeting site will also be available at that time. This public hearing, all the applicant's presentation on this project now stands adjourned. And the time is now nine forty. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.